January 5, 2016, meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Would you please take the roll?
Randy Caswell. David Goff.
President.
Steve Hannan.
Here.
John Sullivan.
Here.
John Kraus.
Here.
Patricia Connell.
Here.
Ed Rothschild.
Present.
I move to excuse Ms. Caswell from the meeting. Please. And it's not displaying. It didn't display, but... Want to just redo it? There it is. I see it on our screen. Let me... What if we do it again? Go ahead and cast your votes again. All right. And that passes six to zero. All commissioners present voting in favor. The minutes for the December 8, 2015, meeting have been submitted for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved as printed. Moving on to general business, there are no general business items to discuss this evening. Likewise, reports, there are no report items to discuss this evening. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to petitions and communications. This is a time when anyone may address the commission regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearing scheduled on tonight's agenda are the Microspaces at Indiana Business Center preliminary development plan. Additionally, we would ask that you would hold comments you may have regarding any application that has been filed with the city or which is likely to be filed with the city until the public meeting, public hearing on those items, where we will welcome your comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission regarding anything else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. At this time, I would like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation, after which I will ask those who are in favor of the applicant to speak and then those who are in opposition. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all the testimony has been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed and questions will be taken from the Planning Commission. I would now like to swear in anyone that wishes to speak in any public hearing matter before this commission tonight. Please rise, raise your right hand, and I'll swear you all in now. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in matters before this commission is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer "I do." Thank you, you may be seated. All right, the first and only hearing tonight will be Microspaces at Indiana Business Center, PDP 2015-0009. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The applicant was required to submit written notice to the neighbors post signs on site and staff was... City staff, we published notice on a local paper. And the affidavit of mailing and the postal log are all in order.
All right. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. The affidavit... The staff report, posting log, and affidavit and mailing then are made a permanent part of the record. Is there a representative of the applicant present? Would you please step to the podium, state your names, spell it out for us, and provide your address for the record, and then you may proceed.
My name is Greg Pires, last name P-I-D-R-C-E. Address is 4680 Indiana Street, Unit 27, Golden, Colorado 80403. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to present this project today. And special thanks to Carol and the staff for helping us to shape this project to the point that it's at. It was a very enjoyable process and they did a phenomenal job helping us, so they should So our first slide, you know, this is our project here. Architect did a great job detailing out the eight different buildings that we plan to build here. The site plan's looking from south to northeast. We plan to start construction from the south, that's the right-hand portion, the gold buildings, and move north. My partner and I always ask this question is why? You know, why do we do this? What's the fit? We always come up with, you know, two or three items that are pertinent to this, and they always have to be kind of a win-win-win. It has to be a win for us, it has to be a win for the customers, the tenants, the owners, but it also has to be a win for the city. And I think we've achieved this on all three fronts. The first item's purpose, you know, I really think we're focusing on small business and entrepreneurs here. The second is location. This is a phenomenal location for accessibility. And third, economics, we really believe the affordability of what we're presenting is crucial to the success of this project. You know, first with the purpose, you know, I think because we're small business guys, I think we have a heart to serve, the small business owner. It's very difficult to find space. Presently, there's really no inventory, but historically, spaces designed for small businesses haven't always been the greatest fit. I think economics has determined spec builders will build buildings that start maybe at a division of 2,500 to 3,000 square feet, and they go up from there. And I think the idea behind it is fewer tenants, larger buildings, better return, less cost, and it's really driven purely for a financial model, which the purpose for them is return in money. And I think our purpose is a little more than that. There was a study a couple of years ago that we read about small businesses and real estate and the difficulty that small businesses have with real estate. And the number-one issue that they typically have is size, and that size is usually too big. And for a small business moving from their home to kind of a first-starter space, it's a tremendous leap. And I think that contributes to a lot of the failure that small businesses see. And, you know, we personally have, you know, been at all sorts of sizes and spaces, and we've witnessed this. My partner owns a similar-type project for the past 30 years, I believe, and he has good experience. His spaces start at 3,000 square feet, so we have a little bit of experience. The second item in this study that they addressed was design. And I think the age of a lot of the commercial spaces are very old, and so they don't have a lot of the present designs that small businesses kind of need and want. And so we took both of these items into account when we designed these spaces. So the spaces are a little smaller than normal, and the design is a little current. I would like to say a lot of light, a lot of flexibility, a lot of opportunities for businesses to hopefully thrive in these spaces. This is a location map, and it looks like it kind of got cut off there. Kind of shows some of the zoning. What I was trying to show there is it actually exists in a, you know, small industrial PUDI-zoned corridor that's on Indiana. North of our property is, on the map, it should show kind of a pink dashed area. That's an unincorporated Jeffco, and I think that's one of the largest undeveloped parcels that left exist in the city. On to, you know, a study that was commissioned by the city in 2014 actively looked at this... these parcels. What was the best use? What, you know, what did the area have to offer? And it was nice to see the study because they basically came to the same conclusion that we did. Low job-to-housing balance is probably a crucial aspect to West Arvada right now. It's just because of availability of land, more and more residential is being built, and that's probably for the foreseeable future. The other big aspect to this is there's really no... The study says low, but I would say no vacant industrial property available. We, you know, we've had several people contact us about this project. I'm not sure how they heard about it, but they said, hey, we're dying for space. We want to be in Arvada. There's really not anything that really is a good fit for us, let alone just available. And my partner's commercial unit that I referenced, he has had zero vacancy in 30 years, zero, which is pretty tremendous. So the study was nice to see and kind of confirms that we are on the right track. Here's another city or Arvada map that shows the development projects presently on the books. The green is all residential, as you guys know. We're that little tiny purple spot there. I think there is a little bit probably more industrial projects coming forth, but the bulk of the industrial developments being done in the Clear Creek District that's in the east part of Arvada, we're one of the few projects that's going forward. So hopefully, we'll be able to contribute to that job-housing balance. On to the economics. What makes this project a little different is we elected to go down the route of condominium ship owner. Being able to own these units, we felt from a small business owner, is a tremendous opportunity because to own commercial real estate is very, very difficult for individuals in general because you typically have to buy an entire building, oftentimes upper-six digits to starting at a million. So it's usually not real feasible for the bulk of the people that have businesses. So when we elected to go down that, it kind of opened up a whole opportunity to design this different, look at this project differently. So not only from an investor standpoint, but we really believe and hope that this is a small, you know, business incubator. We'd love to see, you know, 65 different businesses come for the 65 different units. More than likely, there'll probably be some owners that require more than one space, but we presently have the spaces kind of divided out, 650 square feet to 1,500 square feet, which is a niche that is really not being served from developers currently. Like I spoke earlier, most of the divisions start at 2,500 to 3,000 and go up from there. We are planning to do eight separate buildings, roughly 70,000 square feet, 65 units. Estimated price range, you know, 110 to 300. That was the crucial part for us, is these have to be affordable. We're hoping to market these to small businesses, you know. We already have tremendous interest from investors to purchase these units and to then lease them out. We're, as developers, we're going to try to keep as many as possible. We're probably 10 to 15 units out of those 65 that we're going to keep. So, you know, we have a long-term vested interest in this project, and we need space for ourselves to work because the spaces that we want don't exist. Even though we can build it, it's kind of strange. We work out of terrible spaces. So the affordability was crucial. As we spoke to the bankers, the bankers were very excited about being able to offer small business, SBA loans, and these were kind of the amounts that were very attractive to them and very affordable for people to own. And speaking from experience, I've leased units for 20 years, and I own a few things, but I don't own all that rent. All that rent ended up going to someone else. And as small businesses, you know, kind of ebbs and flows as they're successful or not successful, it's a great opportunity for them to be able to build assets and have a little bit more ownership and a little bit more control because they're actually paying themselves, you know, for their own spaces. So I think that will contribute to some of their success as small business owners. The next slide talks about the uses and the use classifications, and every time that we sat down with the planning department, it seemed like this was the topic of discussion. And they really helped us kind of get a focus on who's going to come, I guess ultimately. That is, when you build a spec project, who is going to come? And we tried to limit the building groups that really probably weren't a good fit for this square footage. So, you know, A is assembly, you know, it has a parking derivative to it. E is education, so there again, it's a parking. H hazardous, it's really, with the density, is probably not set up for that. R and U, again, probably, obviously residential, you can't live in, and U, it's not a self-storage facility. So B, F, M, S really opens up some tremendous possibilities for the types of users that come. We really see a balance between professional services. We might get a little more medical services. We really hope that light manufacturing finds this design and facilities really conducive to what they want to try to do. And again, there's, I think, one of the large building uses was warehousing that I think we spent a little bit of time trying to define. And as businesses, you know, warehousing really doesn't mean self-storage. Warehousing is really a large requirement for small businesses, and I think it hasn't been addressed. I know we, not only developers, but we're contractors, so we build stuff, so we have tons of stuff. It doesn't fit in the offices real well, you know, we need space. And it's nice to have that space, the same place that you have your offices. And, you know, currently, we have it on other sites, and so we have offices on one site, we have warehousing on another site. It makes it tough for businesses. So our goal here was really to try to take a different look and a different approach to how small businesses work and need in the space that they are required to be successful. And we're hoping with the different sizes and shapes, it attracts a tremendous amount of jobs. You know, we're estimating between 100 and 200 jobs that, you know, hopefully, this campus-style design will fill and bring some people to Arvada, as well as hopefully, a lot of that residential. The economic development, people were telling us that they had over 2,500 people that are registered small business owners that work from home. So we really hope to get them out of their house and to help them get into a situation that they can be more successful and grow. So with that, I'll turn it over to our civil engineer, Matt Adams.
My name is Matt Adams, A-D-A-M-S, at 45 West Second Avenue in Denver. We're the civil engineers on the project, and so I'll go over some of the items from the plan set that you have in front of you. What's up right now is a site data table. It kind of covers some of the technical aspects of how we conform to the requirements of our zoning. It has the parking. We're at three parking spaces per thousand square feet. It has our lot coverage on there. We're under the maximum allowable lot coverage for the site. A lot of that had to do with the shape of the site and working with the size of buildings that we wanted to put in. And as well, it lists the building setbacks for each individual building. We're meeting all of the setbacks, at least at the minimums, and more in some places. This is the site plan, kind of working from left to right. We have a site entrance there. All of the site movements are made to accommodate fire access throughout the site, as well as vehicle access, pickup trucks, small trucks that might come. We've worked out all of the dead-end lengths with the fire department so that they have access to all the buildings for safety. In all, there are three site access points all along Holman. We did at one point have four, but through working with the city and getting our spacing, we've reduced it to three. It just worked better overall for the connections. And across the street there, we have 66th. On the bottom of the page, which is the east side of the site, there's some open spaces that are detention. They won't be usable open spaces, but there will be green areas that will kind of provide, you can sit around them. There's also, at the northeast corner, there's an outdoor amenity area. We haven't defined what we'll use it as yet, but it'll probably be directed towards what some of the users start to be, whether they want picnic tables out there or maybe just a large grass area to use. There are also some nice outdoor amenity areas kind of in the north half of the site, along Holman Street, where the site kind of changes its width a little bit. This next sheet is the landscape plan. So it kind of demonstrates how we're trying to place trees throughout the site. There's street trees along Holman Street, meeting the city requirements. The planting variety and planting counts are all based on the site size and meeting the city requirements. And then the placement throughout the site. Our landscape architect just worked with the site, as well as the architecture, to try to make good use of some of our outdoor areas and also getting trees in the parking areas that will be compatible with that. That's all I have for now, so I'll pass it along to the architect, and I'll be available
Hello, my name is Kent Sanford. I'm with... Sanford, S-A-N-F-O-R-D. Address is 2,000 West Littleton Boulevard. I'm with Inter Group Architects. So in the remaining time we have, I'd like to discuss briefly the overall architectural design concept, as well as some of the more finer details of the individual buildings. So from the outset, the development team thought it was very important that the architecture should express the unique and innovative development concept that the, you know, the building serves. So in that, we really wanted something new and fresh that really hadn't been done before, as well as, you know, keeping things simple, kind of barn-like forms that kind of relate to the architectural past and kind of mix up with modern detailing and materials just to give it a more, you know, up-to-date feel. And then finally, it had to be functional and economical, and as Greg mentioned earlier, that the economical and affordability is, you know, a pretty big driver of the whole thing. Also, we wanted it to really enhance and add character to the existing neighborhood and other developments around there. And then finally, we really wanted to create a distinctive identity solely for this project to really, you know, make it pop and make it noticeable. So I'll start here with the overall view, and as a point of reference, you're... This is kind of looking northeast, as we mentioned earlier. Holman Street is on the west. 65th Drive is down there in the lower right-hand corner. 66th Place is up there in the upper-left. The overall concept involves two main building types. Building type one is the simpler, smaller type on the east side of the property. Building type two is the gabled form structures along Holman Street. And we placed those on there because they're more... They're larger, for one thing, and they have more character and detail, which will help activate the street a little bit, give it a little more character. What unites the whole project is common building, common roof forms and materials. We wanted to, you know, make sure that everything is unified, and so we're using a common roofing material, standing C metal roofs. And then the main building material is stucco used throughout the entire complex. As Matt mentioned earlier, there's a green buffer along Holman Street, and where this Holman Street curves and the site gets wider up there on the north end, in front of Buildings Two and Three, is where we were able to have some public amenities there. Outdoor seating areas, whatnot, picnic tables and so forth. There's also a green buffer along the east side adjacent to the adjacent property. And we've also provided a six-foot fence that screens the property on the north side. It's a little six-foot-high white PVC fence that runs along the north side there and jogs around that top building. Another item here that kind of unites the whole project is we wanted to have some accent colors, just to give some variety and flair to the project, and also to give each individual building its own identity as well. Also, to give it more character along the street, we've varied the orientation of the buildings. Some buildings face the street with balconies, others, like the middle building, which is Building Four, right there in the middle, is rotated 90 degrees, just to give some variety along that street front and so that everything isn't looking the same. And finally, as Greg mentioned, we're going to be phasing this, starting from the south end, working our way north. So the first phase will probably involve three, the first three buildings, and then depending on market demand, we either go by, you know, Lot Two, Lot Three, and Lot Four, maybe in combination thereof, so... Here's a large view of the building type one, which is the simple shed structure. And it's a two-story space with optional mezzanine at the rear, and with that high space where you can get a good amount of light in there, and will be nice light in the area. Large overhangs will help, you know, add interest to the simple forms. And the exposed structural steel we're going to provide helps modulate and kind of break down and give some scale to the building as well. On the front of the building here, there'll be some trellis elements, as well as some perforated metal corrugated screens, which help, you know, add visual interest and kind of provide some relief and texture to the architecture as well. To add more detail, we're going to add some mullion to storefronts and overhead doors. And on the corners, we're trying to add a contemporary flair with that cornered glass instead of just more normal, traditional punched openings. We're going to be highlighting the entries as well with the painted steel canopies, and above every entry door, there's going to be a colored accent panel to highlight the individual entryways. Materials that we're going to be using will consist of cementitious stucco, standing C metal roofs, and the perforated corrugated metal screen adds kind of a contemporary, modern, edgy feel to the building. The next slide is a view of the building type two, which is defined by the gable roof form and balconies. Again, this will also be a two-story space, similar to the building type one shed structure. The balconies here will be accessed from optional mezzanines through overhead doors. It's hard to see in the slide here, but behind the screens and on the balcony edge, there's overhead doors potentially, or the owners could have an option to just have storefront glazing with entrance doors out there. But that's going to provide a really unique outdoor space, which really, in this type of project and industrial use, just doesn't exist anywhere. So that will kind of make this a unique project. As I mentioned earlier, on building type one, we have trellises and screens here that adds texture and relief to the building. Mullion storefront and overhead doors add scale, contemporary feel to the building. Entries again are highlighted by canopies and colored accent panels to help break up the facade. Let me go back. It's real hard to see on this one, but inside that recess, there's actually a live wall. If I could go back to the... On the fronts of the yellow buildings and up at the top there on the red building, there's a building recess. on the red building, there's a building recess, which could potentially utilize a green wall to help kind of soften the building. The building type twos have central mechanical unit screening, so all the mechanical equipment will be screened in that space and also add some accent color to the building. Again, materials will be cementitious stucco, painted steel structure, flushy metal accent panels up there on the rooftop screen, and perforated corrugated metal screens and railings. So, in conclusion, I think we feel that, you know, every effort has been made to create a vibrant and exciting project that's a win-win for everybody involved. There's actually some more here going on. I wanted to quickly run through how we meet some of the design requirements of the land development code. A lot of this will be in summary, but for visual interest and compatibility, we've provided varying roof forms, materials, colors, and window sizes. We've provided structural articulation with the exposed structure, with balconies, canopies, trellises, and screens. Simple forms and similar colors relate to the adjacent buildings and developments. Texture and relief, we've again provided the exposed structure and balconies, screens, trellises, and live walls, and building recesses. Human scale and detail is provided by Molyon glass overhead doors and storefront glass, as well as entry canopies. Public unit entries are emphasized with canopies and accent colors. Materials, again, a matter of review, durable and low maintenance, stucco and prefinished architectural metal panels, aluminum storefronts, painted steel building frames are all very durable and require little to no maintenance. Colors are muted, and, you know, primary building materials are muted to help blend in with the existing developments. Brighter accent colors are in limited areas, as I mentioned, around the entry doors and up high on the rooftop screens. Facias, gutters, and trellises all match the roof colors. As far as facades go, there's no facade longer than 200 feet. And every building is separated by walks and/or parking areas. And we've integrated two out of the three required facade design standards using transparency and surface features. Item H is kind of standardized buildings throughout the whole development, so they have similar roof lines and roof materials, similar facade colors and materials, similar entry locations and architecture, and they all have similar amounts of glazing facing the streets. And finally, all the mechanical equipment will be screened by parapet walls, fencing, screens, or landscaping. So, again, thank you very much. And I guess we'll open up for questions, if you have any.
So, I will now open the hearing for comments from the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who would like to speak opposed to the application? So, with that being the case, I don't suppose there's any need for rebuttal statements. So, I'll close public input portion and move on to questions and comments from the planning commission. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question. Since these units can be, I guess they could be owned by individual investors or different groups, what would govern, I mean, the individual owners to keep the property looking similar? I mean, like change in color or change in facade? Is there something?
So, it's a comment that, you know, a residential condominium ownership, same form. So, there's a single document, we already have it in place, 50, 60 pages, pretty detailed there again, since we're going to be owners. The Commercial Owners Association maintains and owns the buildings virtually. So, as a condominium owner, you have basically the air rights. So, you don't own the building, you don't maintain the building. So, it's a, for this style of density or this amount of density and this style of construction, it's a pretty good benefit to owners, that they don't have to maintain this.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Rothschild.
Got a number of questions. First one's for staff. Could you go through with me allowed uses and disallowed uses that are expected?
Basically, what we asked the developer to look at the use table, which he kind of went through in terms of what would be allowed under the uses, under the PDI zoning. And then, he kind of looked at it in terms of the uses that would be allowed, but would impact, like wouldn't meet the parking ratio like a school, that would be allowed under the PDI. Those are the things that we looked at, and then he removed that from his use.
So, and I didn't memorize that slide, but retail, brew pub, those kind of things?
Retail is not allowed under the PDI zoning district, so there would not be any of that. So, it's basically the land use table that would go down. Potentially, there could be a brew manufacturing, so that could be in there. So, basically, all the uses that would be allowed under the PDI. It starts as far as like agriculture, some of the uses, live work would be allowed.
How about gyms, workout?
Gyms, recreation. And I think he, you excluded that on his uses. So, again, you had the opportunity to look at what would be allowed in his development, but then also prevented other uses that would not probably be compatible with the requirements of those uses.
Okay. Then, if I question. So, my concern is, for cost-effective space, you will have pressure from retail and other uses to be in that space, because we've seen this already in the city, rather than pay premium retail prices to move those type of facilities into more cost-effective space. And I guess it's sort of a warning, somehow that needs to be controlled, because I don't think you have parking facilities and so forth to support the type of facilities that would have lots of people coming in, right? It's designed for industrial manufacturers.
Yeah, true. You know, that was one of, as we kind of spoke and kind of designed this, this truly doesn't have a retail component, even though it really looks like retail, and this at times might be nicer than retail. We can't by use allow retail. It can be wholesale retail, which is kind of a gray area, which you guys have dealt with that.
So, if you, yeah, I mean, we've dealt with it right in that neighborhood, right?
Yeah.
And we've, and you can see the development along Sheridan in what looks like similar space, right?
Yeah.
And there's a brew pub in there, there's other facilities that require significant parking.
Well, yeah, that's one of, since we have to sell, and me personally, I'm the guy that is the face for this, so unhappy owners, I have to deal with them. So, it's our intention to really make sure, and I know it's not a game of perfect here, and you can't make everybody happy, but there's certain buildings that are going to be conducive to, you know, maybe a wholesale brewery operation, if that in fact comes. And we're going to do everything in our ability to try to put them where they really need to be. But it's also a timing situation where they might have large use after 5:00, where we kind of get a better use out of the site. And historically, you know, breweries and things that took tremendous amount of traffic haven't been allowed. I mean, that's kind of been a recent development.
Yeah, I mean, I raise it as a concern.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't think there's sufficient parking to support those facilities, and I think you'll have pressure to put those facilities in.
Yeah, well, and CrossFit too. And right now, CrossFit, every building in town has a CrossFit. It's great. I love everybody healthy, but I'm not sure how the demand's driving that. Tremendous amount of parking issues with CrossFit as well.
And then, I have a couple of ancillary questions. First one's very straightforward. The square footage that you mentioned was about 70,000 square foot. Is that just the footplate? That doesn't include footage on the second level, right?
It does not include mezzanine square footage.
Okay.
If we do a full second, I believe building number two up kind of in the left-hand corner presently has 3,000 square feet of second story. There's a current building code that restricts second-story space to 3,000 in a building for accessibility reasons. So, we're kind of limited. And our ruling from the International Code Council was mezzanines are included in that. So...
And is that included, that square footage, in parking requirements, or is it just the footplate?
I believe it's just the footplate.
Yeah, the 3,000 in Building Two is included.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And the mezzanines can occupy more than 50% of the square footage of the building, and there's some use loading that really makes them low-density. I think it's 100 square feet per person, so I don't know how much that really contributes.
And then, my last sort of a pair of questions is, given the focus is light industrial or industrial use, is there sufficient access for tractor-trailer to come through here to make deliveries and sufficient trash? Because I speak as a small business, perhaps three locations.
Yeah.
That always seems to be an issue, especially if you have lots of small units, you're going to have, it's, you're going to have a lot.
Yeah, on the trash issue, we're going to have double-size, you know, large-sized containers. There's three, I believe there's three locations that have the extra-big trash containers. And it's one of those things from the Owners Association. When we get it fully built out, if they need trash delivery twice, three times a week, that's just something that they're going to have to accommodate. As far as tractor-trailer, given the fact that we had to meet the requirements of the fire trucks and are the turning radius and stuff, there's two or three locations that tractor-trailers can kind of pull up to unload. And each of the units is, we worked through this, each of the garage doors have a restricted element to that unit. It's not a deeded element, but it's a restricted element. So, you know, the business owner can park in front of and there, you know, have availability for that garage door. Because some of these, depending on the building type, all of them have a garage door component. The bulk of these garage doors are 12-foot garage doors in height, they're 10-foot wide. So, that's part of the exercise that we've had to go through to make sure our parking aligns with that, that none of them are blocked by handicap parking, center islands, landscape islands. So, as we go to FDP, all of that has to be completely detailed out, and we're pretty close to getting it detailed out now.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there a motion? Mr. Rothschild?
I move that PDP 2015-009 Microspaces at Indiana Business Center Preliminary Development Plan located at 6670 Holman Street be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion's based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on Pages Seven and Eight of the staff report.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, commissioners cast your votes. And that motion passes with all commissioners present voting in favor. So, with that, I'd like to thank you for your presentation and the thoroughness of the preparation. That was pretty evident, in my opinion. I have a lot of comments, a lot of interest, but I don't know if I need to go into them now. But just continue to work with staff, and they'll, you know, get you the next steps. Staff, are there any other items to consider this evening?
We do not have any items scheduled for the January 19th meeting, so that will need to be canceled.
Sweet. Is there, can I get, I'll just move, is there a motion to cancel the next meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Kraus? Commissioners cast your votes. Seems like that one never fails.
Yeah.
That passes with all commissioners present voting in favor.
Yeah.
So, with that, the next official meeting will be February 2nd, and we do have four items on that agenda.
All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you.